... President Biden, President Biden. 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 President Biden.
All right, Wyatt. Here. Here. Prester.
Here.
Bun's presence. The bell.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda, anything to remove?
I don't know yet. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
The Bob Dieter associated, what is that?
That is our Hudson HMEU Task Force consultant that we hired when we're splitting both ways. This is the first billing from him, of which we will then get half of that reimbursed from HMEU.
Because we've limited that to 5,000, right?
It's a 10.
To 10.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And then data technology?
That is the yearly software fee.
Okay, it's an Aces?
Nope. Data tech is our account.
Okay.
Our accounts pay, our software.
Oh, good.
Like utility billing and stuff like that.
Any other questions?
Like a QuickBooks, but not QuickBooks.
Yeah, it's what we...
The Summit.
Yeah, it's Summit.
Summit. Motion approved?
So moved. Second.
Additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to everybody in the audience. Carrie, Jim, Erin, Lisa, you got the floor.
I'll start. I'm Carrie Dara. I know most of you, many of you, and we had an instant chat. We mostly just wanted to come tonight and give you an update. As having you as an investor is really important, and we want to make sure that we provide the value for you, and we think that we do, but we also need to share with you what that is. So I'm here tonight with our Vice President, Economy Development, Lisa Spiegel, who was been with before you before, and Jim Schaefer, our Director of...
Relations.
I almost said government.
I don't know what he does, but he's here.
No. And Erin Jarnigan, who is our Digital Marketing Specialist. So Erin wants to share some updates with you. But while I am the representative of the Alliance in Chamber, really my primary goal is to make sure these professionals have the tools and the resources they need to do their job well. So I'm glad to be here in front of you, and I know we'll be back again. So, thank you. Erin, why don't you share what's up?
Yeah, absolutely. So Chrissy, if I could have you pull back up that Live the Valley site. This has been kind of the thing that I've been lucky enough to work on over the past eight months as an intern, and actually this is my first day full-time, so they decided to come into the business. So kind of the idea behind Live the Valley is it's a talent attraction retention initiative. That just basically means that we're trying to show people all the great opportunities that we have here, and then give them the resources to land here, being housing, work opportunities, things of that nature. And really just the overall idea is, you know, like we have so many great communities here, and like especially going back with the housing thing and the job opportunities, and just giving it one central voice to push out, and really kind of change the way that we're playing in the game of talent. So how it initially started out is, so we have a magazine in front of you, and that was kind of the content that then led to the website creation. And this is kind of how it is in its current form, and it's been this way for about three months now. And then we're using tools, tools like social media, that's like Facebook, LinkedIn, Twitter, Instagram, all of those. And those have been really effective, especially when you do like the Facebook boosted posts, because you can target those, because people share a lot of information in their profiles. And when it's public information, then you have access as somebody who like as an advertiser to then target that information. So we're getting some of the people that we want to look at it, and it's kind of neat. So like on Facebook alone, we've reached over 200,000 people just in these last three months, people that like were interested in having a look at our material, and then actually filtering to those jobs, kind of connecting with those opportunities that are here. And with us, the gist of it, recruiters really love this tool, because when they're out approaching candidates for jobs, you know, they can talk about their, where they're employed, you know, the opportunities that they have at the workplace, but sometimes it's kind of hard to cover that then living side of it, too. You know, what does it look like when you actually have like a five-minute commute to work? Like, what are all the great opportunities that someplace can offer, and something you can't really sell in an interview or back and forth, but then having like a resource like this is just really phenomenal. If you guys have any questions, like feel free to ask. But if you want to kind of look through, we can give you a little tour of what it looks like if you scroll down. And this is also part of it, too, the content aspect of it. Sorry, if you scroll back up just one second. We have videos from this showing like all the neat opportunities in the Cedar Valley, and that's something that will expand as time goes on, getting more and more content. So that's something that I actually ask of you guys, and I clean my business cards. If you have ideas for content, or like need things to share that could be included in this website, we would 100% take those requests, because we're all the time trying to make the site more inclusive of the entire Cedar Valley, and making sure that everybody's represented, because, you know, one community alone, you kind of get like, you get a good picture of like what it's like living there, but with the region, we have so many opportunities and so many different lifestyles. My favorite part is like, I can be in a city in one second, like in downtown, and literally like within five minutes, five minutes driving out here, it's like a nice small Iowa community like where I'm from, and that kind of is what sold me on it. So that's really looking for, so...
So where are you from?
I'm from Panora, Iowa.
Where are you, Panora? PJ's driving.
Oh my goodness, that is like the one restaurant that we have.
Did you go to school there?
I did.
Was Mary Helfter a teacher?
Who?
Mary Helfter.
I don't recognize the name. So then kind of another thing that we've learned through doing this is that, you know, when we share something as a brand, you know, it does very, very well, but you kind of almost lose that personality aspect. So Kate was kind of to sign up for our new thing called the Live the Valley Champions, and basically all it is is just a little program that you can sign up for, and you just include hashtag Live the Valley in your posts, and then those kind of get indexed. So then if somebody would search like Live the Valley, they'd see like our brand, but then also posts by people. And that's what is going to be way more powerful than a brand posting something, is just a bunch of people getting behind that brand and showing that off. So I'm really excited about that. We're up to about 20 people doing that, and that was just something a couple of weeks ago. Hopefully the referral program, well especially if Kate is going to be doing the referral program.
That's right.
So we'll be super successful. But that's kind of the, you know, high level where Live the Valley is, and kind of what we're thinking about where we're going, making it more personal, showing all of the opportunities, being inclusive of everything that we have going on here. And it's really exciting, especially just kind of not being from here, and then learning about it from working on Live the Valley, and now being able to continue that on and hopefully share that message with other people. That's really exciting for me. So, do you guys have any questions or anything about that?
I do have one quick question. Do we, and this may come later in your, when you're going through this, can we share a link to this site on our Hudson website?
I would love to do that.
And vice versa, as an investor, do we have a link to the Hudson site on here?
Yep. So if you go ahead and go to that search magnifying glass at the top right, and type in cities, and then there'll be a page that pops up just below that, Cities and Communities.
Oh, whoops, sorry.
No, it's okay, the top left one. And so this is where we actually link to all the different pages, and we already have that one linked there if you scroll down just a little ways.
Fantastic. I think it would be cool in our links if we could add that to our personal...
Do you get to that in a different way than Search Cities? Because how many go to that site in Search Cities?
So if you want to, if you scroll back up to the top of the page, and then go to relocation...
Click on it?
Yep. And then Cities and Communities is right there, and that'll take you just to the page that we were on.
Got it.
So showing then all the opportunities. And we're actually going to be filtering that based on the size, because without it, then there's really no context to what cities are which. So you know, if somebody's looking for that small town experience, kind of like where I was from, then they just easily find those cities that qualify with that, and then that's right there. So that's what's going to be happening next with that page.
So that just goes to our local website, that doesn't necessarily like give a description of the city of Hudson yet on it?
Correct. And we've talked about that. At this point, we're keeping things Cedar Valley focused, and just kind of being all-inclusive, because that's the picture we're trying to share with everybody is... So that's why we haven't gone that detailed into that, but we're talking about that, so we'll let you know.
Okay.
But you can put a 50-word description on our, on our website, where the directory is of all of our business, and that's one thing I noticed. You guys have uploaded your logo, but you need to put a 50-word description, just of what your niche is. You can also add photos there, if there's any photos of the city that you want to...
Where do we get that, too?
I think that Chrissy set up with the login information, then you can upload it yourself. So I'll double-check tomorrow that you have that information.
Because we posted a job description on there, or job posting.
Yeah, you can use...
And those job postings are then filtered through, so on the Live the Valley Opportunities page, it's all the job postings that get filtered through ours, so that was included on there. So yeah, absolutely.
So one of the things we know is that people want to go places, both where they see other people that are like them, and where they feel welcome. And so this site can do both, can show, show them both.
I think when we do our 50-word description, we sure want to include showcasing the school system, too.
And also with the links on that Cities and Communities page, if you have other links you'd want us to include, whatever that may be, even to like give you like a Facebook page that posts things or anything like that, we can 100% put that in there.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Just one of the other things is that he hasn't mentioned he could really go into some in-depth explanation on our social and digital media on Live the Valley, Facebook, Pinterest, Instagram, et cetera, and Twitter, too. And would encourage you, as you have content, let's say there's a new housing development, a new apartment complex going up, if someone could run point on that and send it to Erin, we can do special push-outs that way as well.
Awesome.
As well as festivals. So maybe, maybe it's Chrissy or someone, Kate, or Erin there. It would be good for Erin to have an idea of events and festivals that are occurring in Hudson over the years, so we can plan out and try to get some video footage or photos of it that we can share on our social and digital media. The other thing on the magazine, and when we talked about last time, we talked about including more information and spreading around smaller communities as well, Hudson included, is that that relationship is with the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier, and it is on Live the Valley, a digital version, and the Courier agreed with good reason to update that for us on an ongoing basis as new content is delivered. We think the printed piece will have a two-year shelf life, but we want to keep the digital version that's on Live the Valley updated on a regular basis. So anything you send to us, it's not just only a one-shot deal on our social and digital media. We could feed it into any updates for the digital version of the magazine, which we see that as a tool, a resource for HR executives from area companies to be able to share that with people that they're trying to recruit to the Cedar Valley or retain.
And kind of to go off for a point as well, mentioning that Facebook is a big tool that we've been using. And so when Hudson, like the football team went to state, there was a great video that somebody took of, you know, the line of cars, the police cars with the bus and stuff, and so we shared that, you know, celebrating that, you know, this is how important this stuff is, and this is how fun this stuff is. And that did really, really well. And content like that is great, just people being people in their community is kind of the idea, especially behind the Champions piece, people just enjoying what they naturally enjoy. We're not trying to ask anybody to go out of their way and do anything. And so yeah, absolutely, sharing content's awesome.
Right.
Yeah, the digital marketing stuff is fun today. I found a new tool that allows you to like, like watch, sorry, I couldn't get like a...
I was gonna say, you need to sell your best card, so...
No, there's a new tool that we found today that actually like, when you look at a website, it'll show you, so we have Google Analytics, which will kind of list out the most popular things that people are looking at.
Right.
But there's a new tool that came out that, it'll show you like actually like the hot links, so it's like what part of the page is being looked at, how far, or yeah, how far, how far are people scrolling down on your website? It's really neat. And also like attracts the mouse kind of around the page, so we can see that, too, now. So I love that stuff, like it's just so neat.
Yeah, this is all for, to recruit workforce. I mean, from Deere to Martin Brothers, they're telling us they, they need to hire people. They can get them here, but you know, the stay, so this is just showcasing the great attributes that the Cedar Valley has to offer, and the surrounding communities, because like Erin says, this is what people would like to, the community they'd like to live in, and the schools and such are great. So this has been really our number-one thing since I've been with the Alliance, is workforce development. It's not a Cedar Valley issue, it's the state of Iowa, not the mid-left. So everybody's competing for talent, and it's our job to, to show off the Cedar Valley as a great place to be. So that's where your investment comes into play, these are the things that we're doing, and we appreciate it. You can see where we're at with the list of people that you're in company with, and we're, you know, Carrie came on in September, and we're just out there telling our story. And we've got, you know, we need more investors, new investors, and we're just out there having the conversation. And wanted to come back and thank you guys. It's hard to believe it was a year ago that Lisa and I were here already, so time flies. So we just want to be available, you know, use us as a resource as much as anything. Are you guys all getting our e-newsletter?
I am.
On a weekly basis?
I am.
Okay. I'll make sure...
You don't understand. City email. You probably have, you're a user of City email.
I was thinking, yeah.
Mine's coming straight through to my, my prior life's email.
And I may not have added you, because so you didn't get it twice, same with you Scott, so I didn't want you to get one at work and one from the city, so... We can take a look, and you, you can have access to that as well on your reps, but I'd invite you to come to any of the Good Morning Cedar Valleys, or the Business After Hours, really the last six, nine months, just I guess the emotions, the, the state of the businesses are very upbeat. They've been great, the Good Morning Cedar Valley, we had just last week, over 200 people. It was very nice. Kate, I think you guys, Hudson in November is gonna do a business...
During November for the afternoon one?
Business after hours. That's from 4:30 to 6:00.
So in our Good Morning Cedar Valley last week, for the first time, we always have the Waterloo Cedar Falls Mayor speak, and last week we had Waverly, and so we'd like to invite Hudson to speak at one coming up. Betty will probably be the one that will reach out to see who's interested, who of your group is interested, but we want to keep rotating that round, so. I'm already gonna get pointed at that one. I'm already gonna be up there.
The next Good Morning is in March, and it's gonna be at the Hawkeye Community College downtown campus.
The new, the new building.
That'll be a great place for them to show too.
Oh, they go if they have Yeti mugs. Have what? Yeti mugs. Yeti? Yeah, like with... I know, but... What's his scope, get her one from the grocery store?
It's a $3 one.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
So we just, yeah, I don't know, like I said, 10 minutes, but we just wanted to let you know this is the team, part of the team, actually, but please use us as a resource, and thanks for what you guys do.
Appreciate you coming.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much. You guys are gracious, too. Thank you.
I'll be in touch with you, Erin, about other stuff.
Yeah. Mug stuff.
No, not that.
And you're welcome to go, because this next one's gonna be 20 minutes at library.
Up to you.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Happy holidays.
Thank you, guys.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, have a merry Christmas. You, too.
Okay, Mary?
Well, I got it, don't thank you.
Yes, it does.
Remind you, this outside.
Yo, Carrie's been with Cedar Valley for 11 years. She started off just kind of helping out. So she's been in a long, she's been really good, yeah.
This is the 2018, FY 2018 Iowa Public Library General Information Survey, something I'm required to do by the state every year, and also required to present it to the council every year, so it's a good opportunity. I won't drag you through every line in this survey, but we'll just hit the high points, and I kind of have some notes that are kind of in summary, that will give you most of the information you might want. The first section, general information, is just that. Section B, paid staff and salary information. The total staff FTEs is 2.76. You have two full-time and three part-time employees. It then does a breakdown on salaries. Capital income and expenditures, section C. Our expenditures are at $214,813. Income is largely from the city's general fund. In addition to that, our income is from Black Hawk County. There is a small amount from the state of Iowa, and then we also receive income from the Hudson Public Library Foundation. And again, a small amount that just goes into the general fund from our fee-based services, which are pretty minimal, but I'm sure a little bit helps, so. Expenditures. The largest expenditure out of our budget is staff, and that includes wages and benefits. That is 66% of our budget, which is right where it should be. There was something that came out about the time that everybody had to have these in, according to the state deadlines that outlined that. I'm not sure if it was on a national level or a state level, but it was good to see that we were right, right where we should be in line. The remainder is, of course, 12% is collection, both physical and electronic materials. And then other includes phone, lights, internet, that's 22% of those kind of expenses. As far as what we own, the library collection itself, let me get a file on here. Any questions about any of the expenditures? I'm moving on from that, okay. What we actually own, books, we have 31,299 hard copy in the, in the library. E-books, 46,074. That is the consortium, the statewide consortium that we're a member of. So that makes our total book collection 77,373. Audio materials, 1,991, downloadable 19,446. So our total audio collection is 21,437. Video materials, we have 1,905, and then downloadable 50, because the state with that consortium is just throwing that out there to see what happens with that, and if it's something that's affordable. There's always the, well, there's Netflix out there, and a lot of people use that, so I don't quite know where they'll go with that. And then other items, 200, that would include games, Wii, PS3, that sort of thing, cake pans, books with CDs, kind of more random things. So the total physical collection is 35,414, and total downloadable collection is 65,570. And then we have 76 paid periodical subscriptions.
Do they get read very much?
They do, but they kind of come and go, and a lot of them are going out of business, but then another one pops up, so, or a lot of them are going to only, Newsweek went, I think, to only electronic. And so that's definitely something that's in fluctuation, and it's hard to tell from year to year. In addition to the 76 paid subscriptions, we do get quite a few donations, too, and that helps. People tend to read their magazines, and then we drop them by, so they're random, you can't count on them being there month after month, but if you're just looking for reading material, then, then that's helpful. The ones that get read the most would be probably the weekly, more national news, Time, Nation, what's the other one? Republic.
The Republic.
Yeah. Those have regular followers, people who, people, like it goes out a lot, so just kind of the mainstream ones, the ones you might kind of expect. Electra, print books, I don't know what I meant by this. Well, total collection used was 24,369. Electronic books was 1,228. Actually, those 50 videos, they were, had 50 checkout, or 12 checkouts in Hudson. Somebody's found them. Audio, electronic was 1,423. Of course, that's not, we still, you know, most of our circulation is on the print, in-house collection, but, but the total collection used was 24,369. Interlibrary loan services, we received 207 books by interlibrary loan, we supplied 581 books by interlibrary loan. Registered users, we have 3,213. Total attendance at library programs was 4,479. That's a good number. The highest attendance at one summer library program, which is, that's what you kind of use as your registration number, was 153. So that was a lot of kids, too. Our door count was 38,775, and that was actually up 3,287 from 35,488.
What do you attribute that to?
You know, I, I don't know, just a lot of people using the library.
20%?
It, it's not attributed just to circulation of items, I think it's more, more a trend of using the library in other ways, besides coming in to check out.
Meetings, and, I mean, we've got a lot of people that use those for meetings, and...
Yeah, but I would say that's actually down a little bit, maybe?
Oh, really?
You know? It comes and it goes, it depends a lot on...
You've got some good programming that goes on for adults, too, that I know my mom always pops down for different things.
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty consistent numbers there. So I don't know, I'd like to see that number, and I'd like to see a number that says people are using the library in lots of various ways. I wish that there wasn't a trend in this country that people are reading less books. I don't think that's good for our country, I don't think that's good for our intelligence, I don't think that's good for a lot of things.
And then when they get to be college level, they don't know how to research?
No, no, I think that's kind of a frightening statistic. We're holding our own here in Hudson, but that's worrisome. But, but I do like to see that door count increasing. We do see more traffic, we see new registered patrons coming from some of the new housing in town, apartments, different places. We can always tell from the address, you look at the address and say, where's this? And then I'll ask, and it's one of the new addresses, so...
I do the same thing, I'm like, where is that street?
Yeah, so. Public computer users, 8,285, that was up over 1,000. I thought that would go down. I thought with everybody on their smartphones, they would use the hardwired computers less, but they didn't.
Well, the school still requires them to do some reports that require printing, and like at our house, we don't have a computer or a printer. I mean, so you're, you're my one-stop shop, Mary.
Right. And then the wireless users were at 2,376, and that remains pretty constant. Projects ahead, we have carpet, paint, I had somebody, Judy Shirley was a volunteer interior designer on the original building project. She is volunteering for me again on this remodel, and that's wonderful, because she is really knowledgeable. She brought on some carpet today, and they're laying over there, if anybody wants to stop by and give us an opinion, but...
When did that carpet get in? Is that 20 years now, or more?
This was, it was 20 years. We moved in there in 99, so it'll be 20 years when we, and it's, it's starting to buckle, but it's worn well.
Yeah, it really has.
It was, it was expensive carpet, and I think that's...
You get what you pay for.
Certainly don't notice, certainly doesn't jive out.
No, you don't really, that's not a place where you want to save a lot of money, because it just gets a lot of traffic, and a lot of salt and sand, and so...
And we are looking for ways to help you pay for that with some grants and things like that.
Yeah, we plan on doing a gaming grant when the cycle comes around again. I know that they changed that slightly, so...
Just recently, yeah.
I have that on my calendar, and we'll be working on that. In the meantime, well, it'll be carpet and paint, and then also we'll be changing the ICN room over to more of an all-purpose meeting room. And the foundation wants to help fund what we need for that, and probably a very large smart screen, and we can get rid of that big movie projector screen, the pop-up one. I don't know what else, I've started that after-school cooking program for the kids, and it's been almost too successful. So I'm kind of looking at what we can do to enhance that a little bit. Cooking programs are very, very popular.
Yeah, they are.
The adults keep asking me if they can come to the kids' programs, so maybe that's a sign we need some adult cooking programs, too, I don't know, but it's fun, it's fun. Trends, kind of who knows? Trends, kind of who knows? Like I said, I'd like to see that door count and people using the library in different ways, but things wax and wane. I mean, it's, when you look back twenty years and then ten years and then try to guess ten years ahead? You know, I don't, I don't know what the public will be asking of us, but we try to, try to be there. And there's a lot of exciting things going on. I have a new director, or assistant director, Zachary Dan Stanley. He just recently finished his master's program in Denver, Colorado, and was actually moving back to Iowa. But he's young and enthusiastic and has some great ideas, so that's always good for us, too, to have that little nudge in different directions, so.
How popular are your Friday afternoon makers?
We get a consistent group of about five or six kids.
Okay.
Yeah. So. Just depends kind of on what they're doing, too.
Sure.
And the adult ones that Joe does about once a month, they're pretty regularly attended.
Really?
Yeah.
I'm sure you have a lot of impacts, weather and all.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's so hard to guess. I mean, you look at the calendar and think, when do we schedule this program? And you look at the school calendar and then, you know, it, so much affects it. It's really hard to pick the days best. It seems like Thursday evenings for adult programming is, is our best bet, but, but it just, like you said, the weather can throw it all right down the drain, so it's hard. Any questions about anything?
But thank you.
Yeah?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Oh, I do want to point out our databases. We have, most of these are also through the state library. That's the, a lot of it's provided through the IMLS funding that is always, seems like we're just fighting to repay on the federal level. And this year is no exception. We have Learning Express, it's, you can go on there and take continuing education for lots of different fields. Huge database of classes, all kinds of classes. We have ABC Mouse, that's for the little kids. They can come into the library and read books interactively with the computer and then ask questions. It's very fun for them, it makes them want to read. This is one of my favorites, we have Transparent Language Online. I, I don't even know how many, twenty-five, a hundred-plus languages. And, you know, the, the product is amazing, you know, the, it has, because it's on the computer, you can actually hear the pronunciation and it's lesson by lesson by lesson, and it takes you through. You just take one look at it and you really want to learn the language, it's, it's that neat to use. Credo is a, a reference source. Easy-to-use tool for research, homework, and other reference needs. We also have a Gale product that also is a huge reference source. And then for family history, we have Ancestry Library Edition, that's paid for by the foundation and Heritage Quest Online.
So if you know anybody that's into that, that has access to stuff that, very expensive individuals.
Yeah, you can save a lot of money by using those. One of them, you can start in the library and then use it from home, the other one you have to use in the library. One of our patrons discovered, though, that if he comes into the library and signs on in his laptop, then goes home, still thinks he's at the library, so he can keep on doing it at home, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Admin Personnel Finance Committee, November twenty-sixth, Gale, you got that one?
Okay, yes. So we called the meeting to order at four forty-five. First item we talked about was the twenty-nineteen holiday schedule. It stayed the same as the twenty-eighteen, and so we'll be voting on that here tonight, so we recommended to council on that schedule. Next, we had a tuition reimbursement. Since Chrissy started her master's degree, they have changed it that she has to specialize in a certain area now, and it's going to require her to take five more additional classes. They're, they wouldn't even grandfather her in since she had already started the degree program. And so those five classes are going to cost at ten thousand two hundred dollars. We had, then there's an amendment here to the original resolution, then to include that cost, and at the same time still maintaining the GPA requirement, and also then being required to be employed for six years. So, and these, the additional amount would be paid then from the economic development reserve funds. So we recommended then to council to fund the ten thousand two hundred and keeping the original requirements in there.
Any questions for Gale? Thanks, Gale. Public Safety Committee meeting, November twenty-ninth. Matt, you got this one?
Yes. Matt, what's that?
Thank you, by the way.
No problem. We met on November twenty-ninth at four P.M. and covered a couple of different topics. One was the speed limit on Rancher Road between the four-way stop, all the way in front of the new addition up to about Haseman's Place, if you know where that's at. East of Mary's Place, but just a little. And there's a recommendation to bring that speed limit down to twenty-five miles per hour. I don't, we didn't do any official action on it, but we also talked about different signage to deter large trucks from using Butterfield and Rancher. We're hopeful that we can get something done there. There was conversation about the need, the need of a new server for the police department. And we are going to have some more conversation about that later on in the meeting. And then Chief Marsh just updated us that the department is going to be getting new guns, and so we'll be trading the other ones out. I asked if we could get a special deal for the council members?
No.
And the answer was no. So, meeting was adjourned in a short amount of time. We were very efficient, and...
That's the report issue. Any questions for Matt? Thanks, Matt. Scott, Public Works Committee meeting, December twelfth.
Night at seven o'clock in the morning. Approved bridge inspection, which is kind of an annual or semi-bi-annual.
Bi-annual.
Bi-annual inspection that we have to do on our bridges. We agreed to sell the old sander now that the new sander is in operation. Mark from AECOM was there, present, and gave us the maps as to the flood plain and our flooding issue on Dale Drive. Be good information to help us move forward with that. No action was taken. We approved repair on Butterfield Lift Station and approved two service agreements. Who's those with? AECOM, yep.
It's Hollis Park and Community Center, all of that.
Right, with AECOM, right. And then we also approved some cleaning that just needs to be done here at the community center. As the report.
Any questions for Scott?
Just on the, on the flooding thing? Has anybody noticed where they turd down the Greyhound Park and they filled all that along sixty-three? How much, that pond is now up about four feet. It's, the river's down, the creek's down, pond's up because they filled in all that.
Nice thing is outside of Hudson.
What's that?
Nice thing is, it's outside of Hudson.
Well, it's downstream from Hudson, and it's, that, that includes backup water up to us, too. And there's a couple of big dams, too, so.
Thank you, Scott. Public hearings, we got three of them. Open the public hearing regarding an amendment of the Hudson City Code twenty-seventeen, Chapter one seventy, Development Ordinance, Establishment of Zoning Districts to Allow Tiny Homes. Chrissy, any written comments?
No.
Any oral comments?
See the question?
It says in the, it says in the minutes that it's to be taken on a case-by-case basis. What does that mean? Effectively, it says it approves, it approves zoning for tiny homes, but then it's on case-by-case basis. Does that, does that actually approve it?
It's more of the lot, the lot dimensions is more what they were looking at.
Because I asked Brenda about this kind of last week, the question is, if it's approved, then it's approved. But if it's a case-by-case, does that mean that you're not really approved unless it then comes back to get approved? Maybe you could talk about that.
Well, I think it was more the fact that depending on your zoning is what is really going to be the case-by-case basis. So depending on the lot that you purchase, where your dimensions of your tiny home have to fit in.
So if you're zoned for it, that counts? Or is it depending on the, the all of your zoning and then it's a case-by-case basis as well? Just saying, the way it's written, it might be construed as, it's always a case-by-case.
Well, that's the way the planning and zoning wanted it, was to be a case-by-case.
They pretty much wanted a case-by-case ability because the concerns would be if somebody bought, had a large acreage, large lot, wanted to put in a forty, four-hundred-square-foot house, and wanted to put in a five-thousand-square-foot garage. That's why this is set there that says additional can only be a hundred and fifty percent. So it is a case, it, it's going to be a case-by-case basis for starters until we have the first one, and then we'll see how it rolls, if there has to be zoning ordinance changes in the future. Many things to get to start. We want to get published out there that, hey, you want to come in with a small house? You're going to have some limitations, and we're going to work with you and see what we're willing to do.
Okay, thank you.
You're right. Any other close to public hearing? Public hearing number two, regarding an amendment of the City Code two thousand seventeen, Chapter ninety-two, Water Rate, Section ninety-two zero-two, Rates for Service. And this is basically supposed four-point-eight-five, I think, percent increase, which is, matches the water, the water rate increase. Anything written, Chrissy?
No.
Any oral? Close the public hearing. Third one, public hearing regarding amendment of the Hudson City Code two thousand seventeen, Chapter ninety-nine, Sewer Rate Charges, Section ninety-nine point zero-one, Sewer Service Charge Required. This would be the same thing, a four-point-eight-five percent that matches the water, that matches the water loop. Any written ones, Chrissy?
No.
Any oral comments? Close the public hearing. General Government, Hudson City Council maintains the right to weigh the first and second readings of the ordinance as presented and may pass the third and final reading of the same ordinance within the same council meeting. Item A, discussion action to approve the first reading of ordinance eight zero eight, an ordinance amending the Hudson City Code two thousand seventeen, Chapter one seventy, Development Ordinance Establishment of Zoning Districts. And this is the tiny homes one, correct?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
And we're sure that this says on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, saw it in there in the language.
Discussion. Roll call.
Engel.
Aye.
Bunz.
Aye.
Stavel.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Five-zero. Item B, discussion action to approve the first reading of ordinance eight zero nine, an ordinance amending the Hudson City Code two thousand seventeen, Chapter ninety-two, Water Rates, Section ninety-two point zero-two, Rates for Service.
So moved.
Second.
What it's got?
Discussion. Roll call.
Engel.
Aye.
Stavel.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Bunz.
Aye.
Five-zero. Item C, discussion action to approve first reading of ordinance eight ten, an ordinance amending the Hudson City Code two thousand seventeen, Chapter ninety-nine, Sewer Rate Charges, Section ninety-nine point zero-one, Sewer Service Charges Required.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Stavel.
Aye.
Bunz.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Engel.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Five-zero. Item D, discussion action to approve Resolution two-four-three-three, a resolution to approve the twenty-nineteen holiday schedule. This is basically the same schedule except for the dates on some of them, I presume.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Engel.
Aye.
Bunz.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Stavel.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Five-zero. Discussion action to approve Resolution two-four-three-four, a resolution for approval of an amendment for tuition reimbursement for city clerk office employee Hudson, Iowa. And this is, as Gale mentioned, it was the additional five courses required and a recommendation from the Administration Finance Personnel Committee was to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to go back and review how we got here. I'm not, I'm not making, I just, and give a chance for people to be reminded of. Why did we start this? Why did it change? Where were we headed?
What, it started two years ago? When Chrissy came to us with a request for consideration of getting a master's in public administration. And at that time, we went through Personnel Committee, reviewed it, and we approved it with a hundred percent tuition reimbursement on the condition that she had to maintain three-point-zero on those courses, as well as if she were to leave employment, that that would be reversible on a per rate of, if it's within six years. Now what's happened is where she's been getting this, which is in online courses, they changed their master's of public administration, requiring five additional courses in order to be able to get that certificate.
Then you have to specialize then. You have to have a concentration that you have to be a part of.
So what's your concentration?
Public management.
Which we did this, too, because that was about the time that Bob retired, too, and Chrissy took on the extra degrees. She also has said that she's going to, instead of taking two classes at a time, you're going to take...
No, I've been only taking one.
One, and you're going to do two, so she'll still graduate at the same time.
And actually, I figured that out today, and I graduated in September instead of December.
Okay.
So twenty nineteen?
Go, girl.
Yeah, yeah. Busy woman.
So, again, this is not specific to Chrissy, but just in general. If we were asked, what is Hudson getting for this in return? So it's an investment in, in our clerks' education. Can we put a dollar, I mean, can we, can we put a, like...
I, I think, I think it's from the standpoint of you, we're, we're getting at that edge of city size and complexity, where I believe cities hitting the same level are getting to a point of possibly needing to add staff with specialties. What my belief is, is that Chrissy with this additional education is going to be able to continue to take on additional responsibilities as they come up, so that if we have staffing increases, the staffing increases other than what we're looking at right now in Public Works would be more at the support level as opposed to the administrative managerial supervisory type levels.
Yeah, good. One other question was, oh, we, we agreed to a six-year thing. And I was going to say, if this extends our, our, our commitment financially, should we change that number?
Well, what she's doing is extending her commitment for employment because we're adding six years from, is it six, or was there six years from...
Six years from the last disbursement.
So this will be six years from the disbursement, so it's actually adding another year. So this will be under its own six-year commitment for the ten thousand two hundred dollars.
And we're sure that we're getting more bang for a buck out of this, I mean, just in real brass tax terms.
I think so. I think we're developing our, our, our community and our employees, which I think you get longer-term employees that want to stay, that want to develop, that want to take on more responsibility. We can already say right now that we did not replace Bob Stevenson's role because Chrissy is taking on that added.
Right. And, and we know as we continue to grow with all of these housing developments, we're going to probably need more utility clerk-type taking on some of those things that, that Chrissy, and then maybe Katie can then take on some of the things that Chrissy is doing, too, so that we can use existing staff up until a point where we may need to look at more...
I just...
City Hall staff, I mean, we may have to look at two down the road, depending on, you know, we're adding more streets and everything, and so we may have to look at Public Works, too, in the future.
And I think from the standpoint of, remember when we had Chrissy take on, we agreed to have Chrissy take on additional responsibilities? And I had kind of said I was going to kind of tag-team this thing, so it'll be fifty-fifty through this until we get through it? I'm ten percent now. The only time I'm involved is when it was a relationship with a investor, and I'm trying to patch up something that might have gotten moved up three years ago or four years ago that even predates when Chrissy was here. Otherwise, her and Steve Jordan are just robbing the thing and having Katie baiting as the deputy clerk, as assistant regular.
Great. I'm just trying to vet out for people, like, we're not just helping anyone through their education just for the fun of it. I mean, we're looking for a return on this investment.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so you're stuck with me for at least another year.
If you were a cycling fan.
I could go there.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Engel.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Bunz.
Aye.
Stavel.
Aye.
Five-zero, good discussion. Item H, discussion action to approve Resolution two-four-three-five, a resolution to close Ryder's Road Fast Lane Project, finally.
When I read this, I thought you were closing Ryder's Road. What? Why are we doing this? I thought... Why did that go initially?
Project, project.
Got it. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
I was confused.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Engel.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Stavel.
Aye.
Bunz.
Aye.
Five-zero. Item G, discussion action to approve Resolution two-four-three-six, a resolution setting a public hearing to amend six-three dot zero four of the City of Hudson Code of Ordances. Refresh my memory on this one, which one is this for? I thought I had it.
Good question. Let me look like I can't remember.
Was this a speed limit?
Yeah, a mile an hour.
So moved.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So moved.
I think it just adds...
And that'd be for January fourteenth, correct?
Yes, you're correct.
City of Hudson's going to get some more money on this deal.
Did someone second that instead of...
I will second.
Did you say January fourteenth?
Discussion. Roll call.
Reister.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Bunz.
Aye.
Engel.
Aye.
Stavel.
Aye.
Item H, discussion action to approve Resolution two-four-three-seven, setting a public hearing to amend the Hudson City Code two thousand seventeen, Chapter one-six-six, Development Ordinance, Establishment of Zoning Districts. What's this?
This one is to add greenhouses under commercial.
Oh, okay.
As a permanent...
For Randall's, basically.
Yep, as a permitted use in commercial, R C one.
So it's to set a public hearing for January fourteenth, to have that part of the regular approved as opposed to have to go through board adjustment? Gotcha.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Does that become the permanent realty, or is that still a temporary facility?
It'll, it can be both. It just allows it as a, as a use, so that way, present day is what, what happens is that Randall's has to come in every year to apply for a temporary use.
But then it's just temporary and it's not, not taxable, right?
No, yeah, it'll just, it'll be temporary, no matter what, but it, but it would have to... No, yeah, it'll just, it'll be temporary no matter what, but it, but it wouldn't have to come in and go through the whole permitting process.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have motion second?
Yes.
Discussion. Roll call.
Engel.
Aye.
Bunz.
Aye.
Stabell.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Item A, discussion action to approve Resolution 2438, resolution for approval of police department server replacement with ACES Iowa for the City of Hudson, Iowa. And as Matt had referenced on that one, this one first came through from ACES. Basically, the server the police department has, which has to be somewhat separated from ours, was basically kind of crashing. ACES came through with initial project of about $12,000. Public Safety sent it back, Chrissy sent it back to them, they researched some more and realized that the server that we'd installed about a year ago, it had the Neptune software on it. Neptune is now totally iCloud. So therefore, they had capacity on that server so they can wash half of that capacity off to not have to do a full server replacement. So basically, cut the project down to 6,035, which includes some machinery, some software, some conversion, so on. So that's where this most recent one is at. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Just a question about funding for it. Where, is it coming out of their budget?
Yes, it'll be coming out of their budget. They have, they have, yes, because.
Okay. Do they have reserves?
Yes, they do have reserves, but their, their dispatch fees are now coming out of a different fund. So that's, that frees up about $35,000 a year.
Okay.
So it'll just be coming straight out of there.
Straight out of their fund.
Yes.
First of all, this gives me great ambition to send stuff back to people. Because if you have the same six grand just by asking a question. Now, okay, so I thought about this since we had our public safety meeting. And I understand that it needs to be segregated and I understand that because of our agreement with ACES, we have to use their stuff because they will work on other stuff and we have an ongoing agreement with ACES. And so we're bound by that and so we're kind of.
On an annual basis.
On an annual basis.
Right, annual. Or is it three-year?
It's actually three-year. I would have thought it was three-years.
On a three-year basis, okay, that's one of the things we talked about at the meeting.
Yep.
Now, just for the sake of discussion, and where this comes from is, I believe in the free market and I think that when, when companies compete for our business, we get a better deal. And I'm not saying that I'm against this, I'm just asking this question. Is there any way to have somebody else, because the police stuff needs to be segregated and separate, is there any way to fulfill our agreement with ACES on the other server side and bid this out to somebody else for the police side?
More as an incentive to ACES to bring it down.
Exactly.
It's still part of the city, though.
Yeah, the police department is part of the city. So I think the ACES agreement, we don't roll it in with the entire city. So that would be something I don't think we would have. I think it's definitely something when we get to the end of this three-year agreement, when we have six months to go in the three-year agreement.
We have six months to go.
We have a year and a half to go.
Yeah, yeah, we have about a year and a half.
But I'd say six months before the expiration date of that three-year.
We have to give them notice of RFP.
And so.
Which, which one we would do anyway?
The other question I had was, I don't remember at the public safety meeting that $220 per month number being quoted. I thought it was just straight up $12,000.
No, that was part of the, that was part of the whole.
We asked a question about that monthly.
Did we?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
You and I specifically asked questions. Yeah.
Chrissy, I want to ask you one question. Is the, the current servers, just this is kind of a good guy thing that if you're, the current servers since they're being retired, when they're, when you're done with those, would it be all right if we donate those to Goodwill and/or the Boys and Girl Club?
We're going to have any leftover stuff?
There's two boxes, there's two physical servers that will just be not used anymore.
I, I don't care what they do with them.
Yeah, if ACES comes through and says, I got some left over and if they have them scrubbed, I have no problem with Chrissy letting me know they're here and if you want them.
Yeah, okay, and then on that same note, I don't think, but is ACES, did ACES change their contract to be exclusive? Because it used to specifically say not exclusive.
We'll check into that.
Yeah, I just, I just thought there used to be a line item for that, just so you know.
Okay. Roll call.
Engel.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Stabell.
Aye.
Bunz.
Aye.
Five zero. Item J, discussion action to approve Resolution 2439, a resolution for approval of supplemental professional service agreement number 11, Community Development Department. And this would be with AEGON, it basically authorizes up to that amount as they come through with projects and they bill against that. We've pretty much gone up against their dollars. So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Is this, I had an engineer from AECOM, from some other part of the country, starting a firework store.
Oh, yeah.
And I, so I had a conversation with him, this is last summer, and I just said, how does this stuff work? Because we sit at these meetings and approve ungodly amounts of money and I don't even know what happens to it, so he's explaining to me. I said.
Wait, did engineer actually explain to you what happened with the ungodly amounts of money? Did you have a tape recorder there?
I sure don't.
Because I would give my IT to listen to an engineer.
Sorry, I digressed, but it was just very entertaining to me.
Anyway. So he was of the, he was of the opinion, he said, make sure that your counsel is not just awarding contracts to the same guys over and over and over and over. So this gets back to the same question I was asking about ACES with the police server. Is there any time right now, I mean, I don't know where we're at the process and is there any benefit to us, bottom-line wise, to, if this is an opportunity to take a bid from someone else to kind of let people know that we're not opposed to going somewhere else and we get a better deal?
Well, the way I understand this, is this like retainer. So we have a $10,000 agreement with them.
Yep.
To keep them on so that when we call on a question on a code or we're going to do this development and, you know, kind of give us an idea.
Yes.
Then they bill out and subtract from this contract. So I don't know how you bid that out.
But we have gone and looked at different engineers because we used to use a different engineer and now we've been using.
When you say they're appointed, we appointed them, right?
Just like Heather's appointed us.
I was just going to say, like, on the same basis.
And it's basically by having them on this type of retainer, if Rick has a question he really needs a quick engineering answer on, then instead of having to go out, contact engineering firm and say, okay, here's the question we got, what are you going to bid to answer the question?
Right.
They just have their hourly rate that they go along through. When we get into bigger projects, then they'll come in and say, okay, you're on this retainer, but here's what this is going to cost.
These are effectively.
For this particular project. And then we get those specific.
But we do need to continue to make sure we update and look at our engineering costs on our, on our renewal basis when we appoint engineers, that every so often, just like, you know, we did it with Heather before we hired her, that we, we had cost analysis out and chose that she was the best fit for our community and everything like that. So I agree with you that we need to keep an eye on that.
And part of that comes into fit from the standpoint of how much knowledge do they have built in to their data already to where, are they going to be the most efficient when they come back and actually do stuff for us?
Right.
That'll be the thing, if we, if we look to go out to a different one, we'll have to take a look at that is what's the cost going to be over three years.
These agreements last, Mark said, about two to three years, depending on how much we use them. So it could be something that.
Take a look to see how much maybe some of the engineering decisions cost us in legal fees.
Do they need that right now?
We did have that.
Is this a deal where if we send a message back to them and said, you know what? There were some questions and we're going to talk about it next month, that that would send them a message and says, okay, we better.
Well, they might be out of their billing amount that we'd authorized by the last resolution, so it might put a hard halt on.
I'm not exactly certain.
And it's the exact same dollar amount as what it was two years ago.
These are effectively prepaid services now.
Here's my other thing with them, just right in, in where we sit right now. They're familiar with that Butterfield Ranchero monstrosity that we have going on. And to bring somebody else in right now with that, oh my gosh, I can't imagine. That would probably be a nightmare for us.
And I'm not suggesting that we just get herky-jerky and change it.
Yeah, yeah. No, I agree with you.
We did, we did, since I've been on counsel, we've switched.
Yeah, and that was shortly after I arrived here.
And on another, on another note too, anytime that I have an issue or I have a question
about a development that I may not know, I'll just send them an email and say, okay, I just need an answer about this or something has come up. But anytime that we have like a preliminary plat or anything that goes to planning and zoning, it's always reviewed by, by the engineer.
Cool.
And he usually will get back to me within 24 hours. So.
Okay.
Good question, though.
Thank you, thank you. This is short. I believe that this is actually, it's not a retainer where it's sunk, but this is actually prepaid stuff. So you're actually kind of bank, so when you have.
No, no, we get, we get bills on.
It's an actual return.